It's good to see everyone here tonight. Nice crowd, good-looking crowd we got out here today. And I know everybody, I see some little ones back there probably excited about the Christmas season coming up. And I know even some of the big kids up here at the table are excited about it too. So I hope everyone does have a nice Christmas and enjoy the holidays. So it was the, we call the meeting to order before we approve the agenda. I think we have some amendments to the agenda. Dr. Rice?
Yes, sir. Chairman Robertson, we would like to remove item B, discussion of facilities and enrollment planning off the agenda tonight due to the presenter is not going to be able to be here due to an illness this evening.
Okay. Any other changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay. That brings us to our good news section. Dr. Rice?
I'll turn it over to Mr. Rose to get us started.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Rice and our board. I had the pleasure of presenting the awards for our graduation and growth award certificates for our schools for the past year. This is the third year that the Department of Public Instruction is presenting awards for achieving and exceeding expected academic growth. In addition to displaying this certificate, schools may obtain a website badge graphic that can be used on the school's website or on printed items. State Superintendent Kathryn Truitt requested that we share her appreciation and congratulations to the students and educators for their hard work. So we do have this broken out into three different award areas. And what I would like to do is call these up. And then at each pause for each of these three areas, I'd like to take an opportunity to have a picture with our board at that time. The first recognition that we will have is the 100% Graduation Club for 2122. And this is for Stokes Early College High School. So I ask that Stokes Early College High School representatives come receive your certificate from Ms. McGee and then come forward for a picture with our board.
And board, if for time's sake, y'all would like to stay up here in the front as we call these up, we could probably roll through this a little quicker.
Okay.
So for our next award area, these are schools that exceeded North Carolina academic growth for the 2122 school year. year. Stokes Early College High School has received this as well. And when I call your school's name, please come forward to receive your certificate. Yes, sir. And West Stokes High School, if representatives from West Stokes High School would please come up and receive your certificate as well. Take a picture then. And then we'll have your pictures with our school board. Yes, sir. All right. And then we'll probably get Wes to come back up at the end so we can have a picture of just you all with our board as well, like what we're talking about with the other schools. All right. So for the first school that we will call up, King Elementary School, please come forward. Sure. Yes, sir. These are schools that met academic growth for the 2122 school year. And when I call your school's name, please come forward to receive your certificate. Yes, sir. Take a picture then. Yes, sir. All right. And then we'll probably get Wes to come back up at the end so we can have a picture of just you all with our board as well, like what we're talking about with the other schools. All right. So for the first school that we will call up, King Elementary School, please come forward. Sure. Yes, sir. These are schools that met academic growth for the 2122 school year. And when I call your school's name, please come forward to receive your certificate. Yes, sir. Take a picture then. Yes, sir. All right. And then we'll probably get Wes to come back up at the end so we can have a picture of just you all with our board as well, like what we're talking about with the other schools. All right. So for the first school that we will call up, King Elementary School, please come forward. Sure. Yes, sir. These are schools that met academic growth for the 2122 school year. Sir. The next school we'd like to recognize is Lawsonville Elementary School. Please come forward for your certificate. The next school we'll ask to come forward is London Elementary School. Next, we'd like to ask for Mount Olive Elementary School to come forward, please. Next up for recognition for meeting academic growth, Nancy Reynolds Elementary School. The next school we'd like to recognize for meeting academic growth, North Stokes High School. The next school that we would like to recognize for meeting academic growth is Pan Hall Elementary School. The next school for recognition for meeting growth is Pinnacle Elementary School. The next school for recognition for meeting growth is Pinnacle Elementary School. The next school for recognition for meeting growth is Pinnacle Elementary School. And the last school on our list for meeting growth is Sandy Ridge Elementary School. All right. more schools that did not meet than probably any time in history in our results. So the fact that these schools met and exceeded is extremely impressive. And I was just looking through numbers. We know it's a very, it's a challenging statistical formula that I use to calculate this. Once you go over two, you exceed growth. I will ask West Stokes to come back up for a picture, and I will say that their growth was nearly eight on that formula. That's awesome. So please come back up for a more picture.
or second recognition, I don't know if that's second set or second recognition, but our second person presenting at least.
All right. Good evening, all. And it's nice to be able to recognize this very important award started this year on behalf of the Board of Education. This was something that they wanted us to begin to find ways to recognize and show how much we value our employees. So we are very pleased tonight to recognize Mrs. Carly Worrell from Walnut Cove Elementary. She is the school nutrition manager there. And as she's coming on up, I want to tell our audience and our Board of Education a little bit about Mrs. Worrell. She's a rather special lady. She joined the school nutrition department about a year ago. And when our school nutrition director, Mr. Matt Brown, came across her the very first few times at Walnut Cove Elementary School, he was rather amazed at how efficient she was because not only is she new to food service management, but she's also new to retail management. And he said, "You would never believe if I only had her actions to go on because she runs a very tight ship, keeping the product and waste to a minimum. And her desire to do what is right and her willingness to ask questions certainly makes her an ideal cafeteria manager. She's often that first one that speaks up in a meeting and asks a question about a recipe." Carly and her staff at Walnut Cove Elementary were the first this year to serve their Thanksgiving meal. And thanks to the hard work that went into that, not only was she supportive of that special event, but she turned that cafeteria into a cafe, transforming it into like a cozy restaurant. And then the school staff came in and served the students. So can you imagine how special that was for those students? And then after that short Thanksgiving break that we had and that special meal, Mrs. Worrell was visited by some of our friends at the Department of Public Instruction, which can often be a little bit nerve-wracking. But they were here to kind of go through things a year in advance of our annual review, which will be next year. But when that representative from the Department of Public Instruction left, he said he was just very surprised that Carly was so new because she did such an excellent job answering all the questions. And he said that next year, if Walnut Cove Elementary School is selected for that annual review, that they should be very happy because they did so well this year. Please help me congratulate Mrs. Carly Worrell.
Yeah, one more. Mrs. Worrell is joining now. I'd love to have her bring two, Lynn Tucker and Lynn Tucker's student at Southeastern and Lynn Tucker's a student at Walnut Cove Elementary. That's all right. I feel the same way in some meetings, so it is perfectly understandable.
He cries the same way in some meetings.
And Mr. Chairman, that concludes our good news for this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Rice. And I'd just like to congratulate all the schools for their hard work. You did a great job. It's good to see everyone out here tonight. Thank you for all you're doing and to educate our students. We're very proud of each and every one of our schools. So thank you. That concludes our good news, and we'll be on to our consent agenda. It's, everyone is welcome to stay on and join us in our meeting if they'd like. If we want to take a minute, if any of you are ready to head on out, then that is fine too.
And there's the exit.
Doug, you can't go.
Okay. On our agenda brings us to, excuse me, brings us to the public comments. Mr. Johnson, do we have anyone sign up tonight for public comments? Okay. That takes us on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion for our consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? That brings us to discussion agenda item A, discussion of audit by Forbes. Ms. Moore?
Thank you. Thank you, Lynette. It is a pleasure to be with you tonight. I will never understand why everybody wants to leave before we cover the audit report, though. So try not to take it personally. It is a pleasure to be here with you tonight. And what I'm going to do is share the results of our audit for the year ending June 30, 2022. The audit was completed back before October 31st. It was submitted to the local government commission for approval. They approved it very early in November, and the audit is complete. So it's a pleasure to share those results with you tonight. So in your packet, you have, I think, a copy of your financial statements as well as the other audit deliverable, which is called the Report to the Board. And so instead of going through those in detail, I've put together a PowerPoint presentation that I'll share with you that pulls out highlights of the deliverables in connection with the audit. Let me see, just roll it. Okay, I'm gonna see if I can work this. Got it. Okay. All right. So things that I want to share with you tonight, I'm going to go through a discussion of the audit results and talk to you about our audit opinion. We're going to review the communications to the board, which is the smallest deliverable that you have. We're going to review financial highlights, and then I'm going to talk about the results of our compliance audit. All right. So let's go straight to the audit opinion. And if you were to look in the financial statements, financial statements are pretty big. There's the financial statements themselves, as well as the notes to the financial statements. There's a section in there called Management's Discussion and Analysis. And if you were going to read the financial statements, that's probably the most important part of the financial statements that you want to read because that's the part that Lynette wrote and really talks about the results of the year compared to last year and gives that in narrative form. At the very beginning of the financial statements, though, is our audit opinion. And this is what we produce in connection with the audit. And it's our opportunity to communicate to you the results of the audit. I am pleased to tell you that you did receive what we call an unmodified opinion this year, which is what you have received historically. It's exactly what we would expect you to receive, but I did want to point that out just so that you would be aware of that. All right. Now I want to talk about the review of the communications to the board. And so in your board packet is a smaller handout. It's not the big financial statements, but it's a smaller report. And this is a letter that covers certain things that we are required to communicate at the conclusion of the audit in accordance with audit standards. Couple of things that are communicated in this letter are, it's information about significant estimates and sensitive disclosures that are in your financial statements. And so while many of the numbers that are in your financial statements are solid numbers, there are some numbers in the financial statements that are estimates. For example, the depreciable lives of your fixed assets is an estimate that's included in the financial statements, as well as your proportionate share of net pension and OPEB liabilities. Those calculations are based on actuarial calculations, and so those are estimates that are in the financial statements. If we had had any difficulties or disagreements with management, we would have communicated those in the letter. If there had been any uncorrected misstatements, errors that we found in the audit that weren't corrected in the financial statements, we would have covered those in the letter. We do have attached to this letter a copy of Management's Representation Letter. We include that just so that you can be aware of Management's representations to us in connection with the audit. And then finally, there is an other matters section that just points out the fact that you did adopt a new accounting standard this year. That accounting standard is called GASB-87. That's just there, just for your information so that you will be aware that you did adopt that accounting standard. I can tell you that next year, you're going to have a very similar issue related to another accounting standard called GASB-96, which is subscription-based IT arrangements. And those are going to have to be accounted for differently next year. So just tell you that in case you're in a meeting, you hear about it, you'll know that you've been made aware of it. All right. Now I'm going to cover financial highlights from the audit. And so if you looked in the financial statement, you would see that financial statements have just one year of financial information excluding the information that's in the M-DNA. And so to give you some benchmarks and give you some comparable information so that you can make a determination of how this year compared to prior years, we've put together these slides that have three years of historical information. So this first slide that we have represents the sources of your revenues and your governmental funds. And the largest bar, the red bar, is the revenue from state sources. The gray bar is revenue from county and other local sources. And the black bar, the smallest bar, is the revenue from federal sources. And you can see you had about a $2 million increase in your state revenues this year. Your county and other local sources revenue went up $3 million, and almost $2 million of that did come from the county. Or $2 million of the increase came from the county. And then for federal purposes, you went from $7 million in federal revenues in 2021 to over $9.5 million of revenue in federal in fiscal year '22. That's a $2.5 million increase in your federal revenues, and that relates to the ESAR funding that you received this year. Sure, that's all information that you're aware of, but it kind of paints the picture when you show it in a graphical format like that. The one thing that I would say is that you are going to start to experience a decrease in your federal funding going forward. So it'll be important that you start to make plans for how you're going to cover the positions that are being funded by your federal funds. And I know we've had some communications and conversations with Dr. Rice and with Lynette about that, so they're very aware of the need to do that. This next chart shows the sources of your, or how you spent your money, or the uses of your expenditures. And you can see here that you did have very consistent expenditures for instructional purposes compared to other purposes for the last three years. And that's, again, exactly what we would expect to see, very, very consistent from year to year. This next chart provides some information related to your fund balance. And this is your fund balance in your general and special revenue funds. And those are the two funds in your governmental funds that you have the most All right, now I want to talk about the review of the communications to the board. And so in your board packet is a smaller handout. It's not the big financial statements, but it's a smaller report. And this is a letter that covers certain things that we are required to communicate at the conclusion of the audit in accordance with audit standards. Couple of things that are communicated in this letter is information about significant estimates and sensitive disclosures that are in your financial statements. And so while many of the numbers that are in your financial statements are solid numbers, there are some numbers in the financial statements that are estimates. For example, the depreciable lives of your fixed assets is an estimate that's included in the financial statements, as well as your proportionate share of net pension and OPEB liabilities. Those calculations are based on actuarial calculations, and so those are estimates that are in the financial statements. If we had had any difficulties or disagreements with management, we would have communicated those in the letter. If there had been any uncorrected misstatements, errors that we found in the audit that weren't corrected in the financial statements, we would have covered those in the letter. We do have attached to this letter a copy of Management's Representation Letter. We include that, just so that you can be aware of Management's representations to us in connection with the audit. And then finally, there is an Other Matters section that just points out the fact that you did adopt a new accounting standard this year. That accounting standard is called GASB-87. That's just there, just for your information, so that you will be aware that you did adopt that accounting standard. I can tell you that next year, you're going to have a very similar issue related to another accounting standard called GASB-96, which is subscription-based IT arrangements, and those are going to have to be accounted for differently next year. So just tell you that. In case you're in a meeting, you hear about it, you'll know that you've been made aware of it. All right. Now I'm going to cover financial highlights from the audit. And so if you looked in the financial statement, you would see that financial statements have just one year of financial information, excluding the information that's in the MDA. And so to give you some benchmarks and give you some comparable information so that you can make a determination of how this year compared to prior years, we've put together these slides that have three years of historical information. So this first slide that we have represents the sources of your revenues and your governmental funds. And the largest bar, the red bar, is the revenue from state sources. The gray bar is revenue from county and other local sources. And the black bar, the smallest bar, is the revenue from federal sources. And you can see, you had about a $2 million increase in your state revenues this year. Your county and other local sources revenue went up $3 million, and almost $2 million of that did come from the county. Or $2 million of the increase came from the county. And then for federal purposes, you went from $7 million in federal revenues in 2021 to over $9.5 million of revenue in federal in fiscal year '22. That's a $2.5 million increase in your federal revenues, and that relates to the ESAR funding that you received this year. Sure, that's all information that you're aware of, but it kind of paints the picture when you show it in a graphical format like that. The one thing that I would say is that you are going to start to experience a decrease in your federal funding going forward, so it'll be important that you start to make plans for how you're going to cover the positions that are being funded by your federal funds. And I know we've had some communications and conversations with Dr. Rice and with Lynette about that, so they're very aware of the need to do that. This next chart shows the sources of your, or how you spend your money, or the uses of your expenditures. And you can see here that you did have very consistent expenditures for instructional purposes compared to other purposes for the last three years. And that's, again, exactly what we would expect to see, very, very consistent from year to year. This next chart provides some information related to your fund balance. And this is your fund balance in your general and special revenue funds. And those are the two funds in your governmental funds that you have the most discretion over how you spend your money. And so you can see here that you did have a reduction in your fund balance of about $60,000 in total. And again, this is Funds Two and Funds Eight. But I would just point out that while you did have a reduction of $60,000, you had budgeted a fund balance appropriation of about $600,000. So a very small reduction in fund balance compared to how you had budgeted. So that's all really good news. This next chart shows your fund balance as a percentage of your governmental expenditures. This is good information to keep in mind as you consider the, how much fund balance you have and the need for your fund balance. And you can see here that just as you had a decrease in your total fund balance, you also had a decrease in the fund balance as a percentage of your expenditures. The one thing that I'll point out, though, is that your, the current year percentage looks a little bit smaller, because that does include those elevated federal expenditures that you had this year. And the last chart with financial information that I'll share relates to school food service. And really good results in your school food service fund this year. You can see down at the bottom, you had a net income of just over $800,000 in this fund, and that's compared to net income of just $81,000 last year. So great results. You can see here, if you look about halfway down the page, that net position or deficit, your net position wasn't a deficit, you know, for the last three years. You have continued to decrease that deficit, and in fact, almost cut it in half this year. So great results there. You had a $1.3 million increase in your revenues in your school food service fund this year, and only a $600,000 increase in your expenses. So just strong results in school food service. Any questions about the financial information? All right, well, I'll roll into the compliance audit results. And so when we perform an audit, part of the audit is a financial audit. The other part of the audit is what we call the single audit, or it's the compliance audit. Our audit reports include, for the compliance audit, include what we call a yellow book report, which is the report over compliance with internal controls and reporting related to financial reporting. We didn't have any findings there, so that was good audit results for financial reporting. We also do what we call a federal single audit. And when we performed that audit this year, we were required to audit the Title I program, the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund, as well as the education stabilization fund. And there were no findings for any of the federal funds that we audited this year. And for state purposes, we have to do a state single audit. This year, we audited the State Public School Fund and the North Carolina Pre-Kindergarten Program, and didn't have any findings with your state programs either. So great results for the audit. Lynette and her team just do an outstanding job. And for those of you who we touched during the audit, you know that what we do goes way beyond finance. And so just great results across the school system. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Board. Any questions? No questions? I think, as always, Ms. Moore's done a great job, and is exactly what we would expect as well.
Yeah.
Seems like a very, very good report, very good audit, and I think it seems like that you're happy with that as well.
Yeah, yeah, it's very good results.
Good deal. Thank you, and thank Ms. Moore, too, for the hard work that she puts in, her staff. They do a great job. I think she's about to catch on to this finance.
Yeah, I think so.
Couple of more years, she'll be about it.
Couple more years, she might be there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to thank Forbes for their staff. They're wonderful to work with, extremely professional. They get to the point. They know what they're doing and all that. But they are extremely professional and friendly, and I appreciate, we love having them in the building when they're doing the, they're great neighbors when they're here. And also, in addition to Ms. Moore, also the school financial secretaries and the principals and the directors that all work together with these budgets to make sure that our money is spent the way that it needs to be. And spend, again, 80% of our money basically is spent on instruction of students, which is where we need to, and I appreciate all of their work together to serve our students.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to discussion item C, discussion of draft 2023-2024 calendars. Dr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Board members, as you're well aware, that the time is approaching, that we start planning for next school year. And our calendar committee met recently, and I wanted to bring to you this evening some of the conclusions of the conversations that we had. As you can see in your packet, I did include the current calendar requirements that have been set forth by the General Assembly and NCDPI. To highlight just some of those main requirements, schools in North Carolina are required to start no earlier than the Monday closest to August 26th and end no later than Friday closest to June 11th. Schools must have a minimum of 185 days or 1,025 hours, and it must contain 215 total days. There must also be nine teacher workdays and 10 annual vacation leave days. We have fought for calendar flexibility. I know Dr. Rice continues to do that, and as we all do. But these are the current rules that we have to play by. And so with that said, our calendar committee met on November 28th to discuss two calendar draft options. Both of those options are included in your packet. Both options are very similar in terms of start and stop dates, the number of teacher workdays. I will say that we worked very closely with the curriculum team this year to incorporate several required teacher workdays that are designated for collaborative professional development. And so those are consistent between both calendars. The main difference between the two calendars is the spring break. And if you'll notice in option A, spring break is not tied to the Easter holiday as it traditionally has been. Instead, the Easter break would include Good Friday, which is March 22nd, and Monday, April 1st. And then spring break would be later in April, the 22nd through the 26th. In option B, spring break is tied to the Easter holiday, as it has been in years past. So students would have Good Friday and then the following week, April 1st through the 5th for spring break. When I discussed this with the calendar committee, I sent out a survey to get their input following our meeting. And of the 13 respondents, 12 of the respondents, which is 92%, selected calendar option A as their preference. One respondent selected calendar option B. And so I would like to propose calendar option A to the Board of Education, but also want to state that in one of Dr. Rice's advisory council meetings, it was discussed that not every school was represented on the calendar committee. And that is true. We typically try to rotate that every couple of years to ensure equal representation over time. But every school is not represented every year.
Will that change over soon?
Yeah, next year, it'll change.
I mean, yeah, just starting in January or December?
Yes, well, next school year, because we won't meet again until next fall to talk about the next school year's calendar.
I got you.
And so while my recommendation is calendar option A, if, you know, if the Board wants to put both options in front of the staff to get their input, as a district, we can certainly do that, too, whatever you would prefer.
Okay.
I would be up for that suggestion.
Okay.
Of putting it in front of the staff, or, you know, more opinion than if you feel like it's just kind of from a few versus a broader, a broader net.
Filtered out, only 13, 13 people on the committee, so.
Yeah, sure.
You know, it's a smaller group, but.
Maybe it was 12 or 13.
12 of 13.
I mean, I think that's a pretty good representation. But do we have any idea what the other districts around us, how they're handling that? I know Easter is early this year. I guess there's a reason we're kind of splitting that breakup from Easter to spring break. Do we have any idea how the other districts may handle that?
I don't. I think a lot of them are in the same process we're in right now.
I've not heard of any other, I'm not saying they've not adopted any calendars for that next school year, but I've just, I've not heard of any.
Okay. Board, any questions? Mr. Rogers? I think Mr. Rogers is on the calendar committee.
I was on the calendar committee, and it was overwhelming support for calendar option A. They had the most flexibility. Of course, we still lobby to have district independence for our selection of start and stop days, but until that's granted, like I said, the overwhelming majority were for A, so. I don't, nothing is missed night or whatever. That's why we have a committee to present to this board.
Okay. Ms. Knight?
Yeah, I get that. I mean, I get the concept, and I'm fine with it. I just was thinking if, like, someone mentioned that if it wasn't a broad coverage of representation, then I'd just open more input, that's all.
Yeah.
But if you feel that this is sufficient. At first, I would want it to be like, oh, B sounds better. But I do get breaking up the year and Easter falling, like, right at the end of March, and wanting to push out your, like, spring break days to a little bit warmer weather. So I can definitely see that.
And two, with calendar option B, you know, if the spring break tied to Easter and Easter falling so early, it's all close to two months there with, I think, only one day. And so it can be, it can be a long haul at times for our teachers and our students, and so.
The calendar committee basically felt like breaking it up allowed for a better focus of education, because you got a small break, learning period, break, learning period. So there wasn't that two-month consecutive in the classroom to the point you got burnt out.
So on option B, as I look at the calendar, I'll flip over a couple pages to the actual calendar. If we go with option B, then we have the spring break, the first week of April. And then there is only an optional teacher workday on April 29th and an early dismissal on May 27th.
May 27th is a holiday.
Memorial Day, yes.
That's Memorial Day.
So there'd be, I mean, I see on the, when you look at it that way, it is true that there's only a couple days there. It's a long grind for a couple months with the, for the kids with no, no time off.
And that one optional workday, we looked at. That's always the first one we have to go get in the event of inclement weather. So it was going to be a seven-week stretch with no days off. I mean, I'm just voicing what the output of the committee was. I tried to say back and let them decide. But that was the overwhelming sentiment.
Okay.
Board, breaking it up.
Mr. Rogers, I mean, Mr. Duncan, do you have any questions?
No, I agree with the, looks like the committee, I mean, you are breaking it up over a couple weeks there, a four-day weekend in essence. Been a couple weeks. I don't, I don't see any issues with option A. And so you said there were schools represented as well on this committee, correct?
There were schools, teachers, administrators, and parents.
Okay.
And district office staff as well.
How many teachers? I know you've given us a list in the past as to on what committee, but.
I think five, six, seven.
Okay.
Yeah. Our Teacher of the Year is always on there, as well as some others across different grades.
I think 50% of them were teachers, and then you had admin.
Okay.
But the whole driving force of choosing A is just of the split of time in between.
That's correct. That's really the only major difference in the two calendars.
It would be interesting to see what other districts are doing. I know with family trips and all, you know, it's a plus or minus if we're all the same, because, you know, we could, if you're different, you may have some arrangements with your families and all, so.
Okay.
That's all I've got, Chairman.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bryant?
Either one's fine with me. I know that's a long time between breaks, but when I count days, it doesn't seem as long, but I'm not in the classroom teaching either. So option A, Mike and I, we had talked about it, and I'd expressed my views. He expressed his and some of the others. And option A is fine with me.
Okay.
I see that.
Yeah. I would think if the committee is overwhelmingly in favor of option A, and they've discussed it at length and studied it, then I would go with their recommendation as well, so.
Okay.
Would we need to, do you want to move this to action tonight, or do it in January? Is it, how urgent is that?
We could put on our.
We could put on consent agenda for January, it'd be fine.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes, sir.
I apologize. I do want to, in your packet also is the early college calendar as well. And so Mr. Durham typically works with Forsytech and their calendar along with his school improvement team.
Okay.
And his, the calendar they have drafted does comply with the General Assembly requirements and meets all the guidelines there, as well as aligns with Forsytech's calendar. So I'd like to put that on the consent next meeting as well.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could have just a moment. If, when people hear calendar flexibility, I would like to state the reason that superintendents in most school districts around the state, and from my understanding, the House of Representatives supports calendar flexibility. And that is to be able to align our calendar with the community college calendar and finish exams before Christmas break. And so that is the big thing. If you notice in this calendar, what none of us like about this calendar is that you're going to class December 21st, and then you come back the third or the fourth, depending on the calendar. Then you go to school for a week and a half, a few days, and then you come back and do exams after you've been out of school for, you know, nearly two weeks, and then take exams. And when we say that we want to do what's best for students, none of us would like to have 17 weeks of instruction, take a couple of weeks off, come back for a couple of days, and then take a test on it. That's just, if that was the best way to do it, every university and community college would do that as well. And it's not. And so our General Assembly changed this, I believe, back in 2004, that we were required to have this start date and end date. And so when we ask for calendar flexibility, that is the reason, is we want to do what's best for students. It's not about vacation. It's not about, you know, an agrarian society where we need to be out for, to work the fields or get work crops at a certain time of the year. We're talking about what's best for kids and their education. And so I would encourage anyone that's listening to our, or you, when you speak to our politicians, to please advocate for calendar flexibility. The House Select Committee this year has made six recommendations, and one of those is for calendar flexibility as they move into the session this year. And so please consider advocating for our schools that we would have calendar flexibility in the future.
Seems like we had it there for a couple of years, I remember.
Well, what we did was we did an unbalanced calendar for two years. And so our second semester was longer than first, so we could get exams in before Christmas break. Just an anecdotally, my son came to me a couple of weeks ago, and he said, "Dad, did you know that we don't get exams before Christmas this year?" I was like, "Yeah, I'm aware of that. I've heard a rumor." And he said, "Who made that decision?" And I said, "Well, our Board of Education approves the calendar, but we have a General Assembly." He said, "Well, I'm glad it wasn't you, because this is just dumb. Why would you not take exams before Christmas?" And so even our kids know this is better, even my son. And he's not the brightest out there, but even he knows this is not a good rule. So any flexibility we could do would be fantastic. So I just want to say that on the record, except for the part about him, maybe. But any advocacy, any advocating you could do. I tell you what, if y'all advocating and get it changed, he'll be, he'll be okay with what I said about it.
So Dr. Rice, they would need to reach out to their state representatives?
State representatives, our House and Senate. Again, from what I've heard, the House would be for it, but the Senate has been the problem. And so if the Senate would go, I believe the House would as well. And that's what Representative Hollis told me in the past. And I've heard that from other superintendents, from their representatives as well. But any advocating we could do would be wonderful.
Okay. We did mention the early college calendar. Was there any questions about that before we move along? Okay, no questions. Okay. All right, so we'll put that to consent agenda for next month. That brings us to discussion item D, discussion of federal fund budget amendment number one. Ms. Moore?
And we have to do the amendment. So this is a federal amendment, increasing it by 590,76421. And really, the reason for this is DPI receives a lot of the federal grants in increments. So when we done the best budget resolution, DPI had not received. So when we done the best budget resolution, DPI had not received all of those, that funding. So now we've received some of that. So you can see the largest increase here is due to our special programs, PRC 060. And basically that is because the money has now, this additional funds have just dropped where we can actually use them. And at this time of the year, we have to a lot of times put our expenditures on local funds and then we have to move all those expenditures to federal as these funds drop. So this is actually increasing our federal programs by 590,76421. And you can see the different PRCs and programs there that, of the changes and it's all increases. You have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Moore? Ms. Moore, would you like for us to approve this tonight? Do we need to approve it, is this?
We don't have to, but if the board chooses to, it's, it, you know, it's fine.
Can it go to consent for the next month?
Fine.
We'll add it to consent agenda for the next, next meeting. Okay, that brings us to discussion item E, discussion of North Stokes High Track update. Mr. Goins?
Yes, board members, we met at North Stokes last Thursday. Dr. Jones, Mr. Roberts, the contractors and administrators at the school. And we've just decided it's, it's best just to put this project on hold until spring. With this type of weather, with the freeze thaw, it can't, it can't dry up. And we've got more moisture coming in this weekend. So we're just putting the project on hold until, hopefully start, hopefully in March, early March. And we'll go back and do the proof roll, look, see if we can do, need doing the undercutting and add stone or whatever we got to do and, and continue on. And the, all the contractors did commit to put all hands on deck once we got this project done to, to, to fast track it and get it completed.
Okay. Did we ever get a calculation on how much stone it might be? We had a change order, I think at the last meeting came through and then we were kind of questioning about how much stone they may be going to put down and.
Well, we had the engineer to go back and calculate that and they had used the wrong scale and actually calculated too much stone. But at this point, that's, that change order is just null and void until March to just, until we just see what we have to do. We have to do the additional proof roll. Because once they do a proof roll and it rains a half inch, they have to come back and do it again before they can pave.
Part of that original contract, was that part of that original deal, compacting the soil was part of their original contract? And was that correct? The, the part of their original plans that they had, they would have to go and roll it and compact the soil?
Well, they have to do a compaction test. If, if they add soil, they'd have to, they have to compact it and do a certain, meet the compaction test.
Right.
But if they're cutting the soil down, then it has to meet the compaction test. They don't, they shouldn't have to compact where they're cutting down too. And that's why we, we contract with ECS, they come in and test the soils to make sure they meet certain compactions before you put the asphalt down.
I was just wondering if they had an extra cost in that change order for a compaction that we were already paying for in the original contract?
No. Because they did have unit costs in there, what they call undercut. If they have to come in and take out unsuitable soils, they calculate so much per cubic yard to undercut and add stone back, but then we had unit pricing for that.
Okay. Well, I think it's, I think the best idea is, is to wait until March, pick up on it in March when the weather breaks a little bit. It's not a good time right now.
True.
So board, any questions for Mr. Goins?
But they will have the, everything complete by the, in the, about the beginning of the school year, correct? And if they start in March?
Our goal is to have it completed so they can have graduation.
Okay, okay.
And we were told that would not be an issue.
They, they did.
They almost laughed at me when I brought it up, so. They, they're anticipating putting all hands on date as Mr. Goins mentioned to get it done, so.
What's that going to do to track season?
They have already made arrangements to, to have meets elsewhere and practice elsewhere.
I would think they could practice at Pine Grove, is that right?
That's correct.
And then have meets where, West Oaks?
There or south, and, and they're going to practice some at south too, some of their pole vault and some of the things that Pine Grove may not be equipped to, to handle. But they have a plan, they're, they're used to improvising and, and making the, the best of a bad situation. So I commend them, I know it's been a frustrating project, but I commend their efforts and, and others for working with them.
Good.
One question I would have, Mr. Chairman, we're dealing with the AIA documents. And those can be very specific. So I do think there needs to be an amendment to that AIA contract because there's certain provisions in there if you stop a project. And I want to, I want to make it clear what our terms are on resumption of the project, the time period, whether or not it would result in any increase in costs and then the new date of substantial completion, which I guess is before graduation. So I think, I, I do think there does need to be a definite amendment to that contract.
Okay. Is that something, Mr. Johnson, you can prepare for us?
We can, we can work together, I think, and, and get that done.
Okay, let's do that and then would that be, can you bring that back before our board?
Right, I think.
And the contractor would have to sign it as well?
Correct, and I think we would not take any official action until that documentation is, is prepared and, and ready for the board.
Okay. Is there really any action that we have to take? I mean, that's the, I think they're the ones that's stopping the, the project right because of the weather. But we wouldn't want to get penalized for weather delays.
Exactly, and, and the contractor doesn't want to get penalized for, you know, any late payment or any penalty for late completion.
Not complete.
Right, right.
Is, is it, in that contract, is there anything in the original contract that if, if that project is not completed by a certain date, that the contractor is penalized?
I don't have it in front of me and I, I, I don't recall, but I didn't think there was a provision in there, so.
I don't believe so.
Is that typical that we have something or we don't have it?
It's, I, I, to be honest with you, it's about 50% each way in most contracts I've seen.
I think in projects like this, maybe going forward, I think it is a good idea to have something there that keeps them on the ball.
Correct. If we're going to bring it before the board with an amendment, could we include that?
I don't see why not, could we include that in a, if we amend the contract, include that there is a date of substantial completion and then there's penalties, anything beyond that date?
At, at this point, it could be agreed upon. Normally that's in, if we do a bid proposal, that would be part of the bid proposal, correct? Because when I've seen this in the past, while it's, it's a great thing in a situation like this, sometimes it will make the initial bid higher because they know there could be a backend penalty. And so sometimes it can drive the cost up and that's why it's not always done, in my experience in, in the past. But, and so at this point, that would have to be negotiated, correct?
But it appears to me that both sides understand.
We under, yeah, we under, we agree to this right now, but. But if for some reason it rained a lot.
Oh, yeah, there's always, yeah.
Well, I would think from graduations not until June.
I mean, I, I agree, this should get done, this should have been done already.
They can start it in March, I would think by.
Yes.
Sometime in April, this ought to be complete. They've got a lot of it completed, right? They've, they've.
They've got everything completed except the base for the asphalt. And then that's when it got caught in the rain.
Okay.
Is it curbing down?
95% of it is.
Okay. Well, Mr. Johnson, to get with you and y'all can figure out the contract.
Okay.
Let's, let's make sure we are covered.
Thank you, board member.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Goins. Okay, that concludes our discussion agenda, brings us to action agenda. The only thing on our action agenda tonight is action item A, approval of personnel. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel report.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Information and announcements, Dr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Robertson, board members. I want to draw your attention to a couple of dates. We will meet again for a work session at 8:30 a.m. on January the 9th of 2023. Also want to let you know that our annual bus driver breakfast will be held tomorrow. That is at the Bus Garage in Germantown. I know Mr. Tetter's got a, a big spread cooked up, so look forward to spending time with his staff and, and bus drivers tomorrow morning. And then also you have third month PMR fundraising requests and field trip information in your packet. That's all that I had, Mr. Robertson.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Jones. Dr. Rice?
As this is the time of Christmas presents, would like to recognize one Christmas present that tonight is Ms. Collins' final board meeting. That she doesn't have to attend any more board meetings. No, this, this is Ms. Collins' final board meeting. She'll be retiring with us at the end of this month slash end of this year. And so just like to thank her for all of her work in the EC department. Lucky enough to, to hire her six years ago and she has done a wonderful job for the last six years. It's hard to believe that's one-fifth of a 30-year career. Seems like yesterday we were in that interview and it also seems like about 50 years ago. So, but like to thank her for all of her hard work and the work of the department to, to serve our kids and our students and just like to thank her this evening before she enjoys a well-earned retirement. You may take your sign.
But you got to do the carbonnet tug-of-war singing, I'm so glad we.
Okay, I think that's it, is, is our last meeting for the year. I do wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and we'll come back and, and start it all again in January. So thank everybody for their hard work, I hope everybody does have a nice holiday. And all I need is a motion to adjourn.
So made.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Ho, ho, ho.
We're adjourned.